Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling to meeting, uh, calling to order. Good? Um, just one sec, let me turn off the, here we go. Okay, I'm calling to order the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Southborough Select Board. The first item on our agenda is public comment, and it's an opportunity for residents to speak to an issue that's not on the agenda, and it's not intended as a back and forth, just an opportunity for people to offer a comment. And we try to keep comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here like to offer a public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to advance one item on our agenda, and that's under the chairs report. The summer program special citation on behalf of the Recreation Department. I'd like to turn over to Travis Farley, our Recreation Director, and Christine McCarthy. Yes, please.
Can everybody hear me okay? Thank you very much for giving us some time at the beginning of the meeting. I know the agenda's GM packed, so we appreciate you giving us a few minutes. For those watching at home, I'm Travis Farley, I'm the Recreation Director.
Um, I'm Erin Navaroli, the Assistant Director and one of the Supervisors at the Summer Program.
And I'm Christina McCarthy, the Program Coordinator.
Thank you, and today we wanted to highlight one of our fabulous seasonal staff workers. Um, and I'm going to turn it over to Christina to tell her why we're highlighting her. She's done a great job managing our summer programs, and I'll let her talk about why we're honoring Erin.
Thank you. To the Southborough Select Board, on Wednesday, July second, two thousand twenty-five, at approximately ten thirty a.m. during snack time at Southborough Recreation Summer Program, Assistant Supervisor Erin Navaroli was approached by a six-year-old camper who was signaling that she was choking, hands on her throat and her face turning red. Without hesitation, Erin immediately sprang into action and began performing the Heimlich maneuver. Once the child began to cough, Erin followed up with back blows to help fully dislodge the obstruction. The camper, understandably frightened and in tears, was quickly comforted by Erin, who shifted seamlessly from emergency response to providing reassurance and emotional support, letting the child know she was safe. An incident report was promptly completed, and the child's parents were immediately notified by phone, who expressed their utmost appreciation. Southborough Recreation would like to formally commend Erin Navaroli for her swift, decisive, and lifesaving actions. Her composure and compassion exemplify the highest standard of care, and we are incredibly fortunate to have her as a member of our team.
Do you want to say anything?
I'm just very fortunate that I was there. I'm really fortunate that the child knew the universal, universal hand signal that she was choking, and that she knew to tell someone, so, yeah.
All right, well, Travis, do you have anything else to?
No, we're, we're very, very fortunate to have Erin. She's one of our many very fabulous seasonal staff workers. Christine has done a wonderful job with the training that she puts all of our seasonal staff to ensure campers having a very safe and fun summer. So we're very lucky to have seasonal staff and a, a excellent program coordinator.
Well, I, I was, you know, I have a, a son who's going to the camp in a couple of weeks, so it definitely makes you think. I mean, thank you so much for what you did. I was getting a little emotional even as you were just reading that. But, um, so, we have, um, I'd like to present you with this certificate. I'll read it. A bravery in action, the Southborough Select Board wishes to acknowledge Recreation Site Supervisor Erin Navaroli. We commend you for your swift and skilled response in performing the Heimlich maneuver on a choking camper on July third, ensuring the child's safety and demonstrating exemplary preparedness and professionalism.
Hey, Andrew, can I add something real quick?
Absolutely.
So, um, as Erin knows, I didn't know who you were, so I've got three grandnieces up here from Kentucky going to camp like last year. So I see you every morning and every afternoon, always a smile on her face, yours too, of course. So, thank you so much. I didn't realize who you were until you walked in tonight, so I'm glad to now put the name with the face, but, um, truly, good job.
Thank you, thank you. They're awesome.
Thank you very much. One more thing, um, tomorrow is the start of our summer concert series, so six o'clock, Neri, free concert, Rampage Trio. Thank you, Friends of Southborough Recreation, they're providing free ice cream and Southborough Community Fund, so. And following week, we have Stacy Peaslee coming as well, so if you're not doing anything tomorrow, six o'clock, Neri School, free concert for the rec.
All right.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to come up?
Thank you.
Um, Mimi, would you, would you like to call your meeting to order?
I call the Southborough Planning Board meeting to order. Is, um, Marnie online?
Yes, she is.
Is she going to be brought over? Um, so, we have Marnie on Zoom, Lisa Brascio, Deputy Maria, and myself are here in person. Thank you.
All right, um, so, Atlantic Management, uh, is here to make a presentation regarding a proposed zoning bylaw that we've been asked to refer to the Planning Board to begin the public hearing process. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Buckley and Mr. Zink. You could just introduce yourselves.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein. I have Joe Zink, the Principal of Atlantic Management. Having to follow that is going to be difficult, so we'll do our best, how about that? And for the Planning Board, uh, for the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein, Joseph Zink, uh, at Atlantic Management. Our, our goal tonight was to essentially address three issues. Who we are, what we've done, and what we propose to do, um, as a way of introduction. So, let me, let me start by saying who we are. Atlantic Management, which I've had the, uh, privilege of representing on a number of major projects throughout Massachusetts, is probably the, one of the premier developers of taking property that heretofore may have seen its better days, turning it around and making, uh, it very productive very quickly. They have this unyielding passion of working with the community to make difficult situations appear solvable, and they have their track record, as I'll show you in a, a few minutes, attest to that success. Um, one of their principal operating modes when we come into a community and work with the community is it's incumbent upon us to answer your questions. It's not, you know, we're here to provide anything and everything you need to make an informed decision. So I would, I would ask the Select Board, as well as the Planning Board when we're before them, as well as residents of the town, as, as we go forward, if you have questions or concerns or require additional information, uh, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. We'll have some contact information. But we'd like to, uh, continue the, the success that they have had over the years, uh, going forward, uh, in a, in a fine town of Southborough. And I, as an aside, I think the statute of limitations has expired because I used to sneak onto St. Mark's Golf Course when I was a younger person, so. No one, no one's going to take me away. I grew up in this area, so. Do, can we throw something up, or? Okay, next slide, please. Next slide. Joe, this is your opportunity.
Yes. Atlantic Management was founded in seventy-two, and it was always been a local company. And one of the things I think Bob was referring to is, uh, when you come to a community, my, my father was a simple guy. He was in World War II when he was seventeen. He said, you have two ears, one mouth, use it in proportion, you gotta learn. So whenever you come to a community, we're going to do a lot of listening and a lot of import, what's important to the community. So, we currently now have roughly six main square feet that we own, manage. We've developed another four main square feet. As Bob said, we bought a lot of corporate campuses that have been older, tired, and where the uses have just kind of shifted away from them and repositioned them and reactivated them now to, to, one, do quality development, but secondly, significant tax revenues to the community. Uh, next slide, please.
Can I just make one comment on the team?
Yes.
I failed to introduce, we have, uh, my partners, Dennis McKenna and Christine Hung, um, from the legal side, and we have the Atlantic team, um, here that I think attests to the fact that this is important. Even though it may be brief tonight as an introduction, everyone felt that they had to be here so you could put a face with the project, so.
Next slide, please. So, this is a project neighboring Marlboro, uh, that was completely vacant. There was literally almost like tumbleweeds in the parking lot. And this was, uh, Data General, as we all know, four nine five had a lot of tech companies where things just shifted. You would pack it and end up buying this, and then there was the Fidelity next door. So there was a million, one point five million square feet of vacant office space at this off-ramp. It was just completely devastated. So we came in and bought this site. We were actually meeting with, uh, TJX to build them a new corporate headquarters here. We ended up introducing them to the city, and they end up going to Fidelity. They took the Fidelity site next door, but we ended up redeveloping this. And today, between Quest Diagnostics and Sitiva, they have roughly five hundred and fifty thousand square feet. The apartments are onsite, daycare, and a hotel. The revenue went from, uh, I think it was four hundred, excuse me, eight hundred thousand to, uh, four point one million with an additional per year now, with an additional four million dollar plus in bill and permit fees. And that was done on a relatively quick basis with a lot of input from the community. And similar to that, we worked within the community to do an overlay. So the zoning was something new that they hadn't done before, and it was kind of, they were nervous. And we always said, you have control, every portion of this project, we need to come back to you to go to the next step. You need to improve it, and if we don't do what we say, then you can just hold accountable. And it ended up very successful.
I, I, I do remember the day, it was the day after Thanksgiving, we met with the mayor and some of his staff, and we outlined what we were thinking about doing because we had spent the better part of two or three months trying to figure out what would work and what was needed, uh, for a project where you, you certainly know one was going to come and reoccupy the HP site. So what would, what would, uh, work and, and revitalize the city? And I think the initial reaction was it was very complicated, and, uh, I think they wanted to take us out and hang us. But, uh, within two or three months, uh, I've never seen a community bond and come together to, everyone rolled up their sleeves. Within a period of eighteen months, I think we had all the zoning put in place that, uh, really transformed an unproductive asset into a very productive asset. And what people fail to realize oftentimes is that the, it's the intangible. When you, when you create something of value of, you know, Marlboro Hills, the surrounding properties also are increased in value, and it becomes a desirable place to, and I don't like the expression, live, work, and play, but it becomes synergistic, and, and things start to take on a life of their own. And I can remember that the mayor would call us and say, when they were doing the Apex Entertainment, can we bounce some ideas off you? Sure.
The mayor also used, uh, unofficial, like, reference. There was a gas station and a barber shop nearby with one point five main square feet. The barber shop was down forty percent, the gas station was down thirty percent. And then, when this got finished, they went, did the highest sales volumes ever. So it does have that trickle effect, and you do need to activate these areas. Exactivity kind of begets activity, and that's what happened in this one. Next slide, please. And the next one is, oh, oh, uh, excuse me, next slide, please, sorry. Thank you. The next, this site is Old Street in Westboro. Similar to that, it was Astrosynica site and was older, tired, obsolete. And they had a structured deal where they were paying very low real estate taxes. They were paying two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes. We bought that site, and it took us a couple of years. We went through some zoning at that, and then we ended up doing a deal with Amazon Robotics. This is now one of their most strategic sites in the country. In fact, Bezos, the entire board were here last fall, spent a full day here. And some of, they do some of the most innovative technology in terms of delivery of products and other technology within the company. There's three buildings there now, uh, possibly going to be expanding more. And the taxes now are three point four million a year, and that's without the middle building even being occupied and fully valued yet. So th- those taxes should soon be four million dollars a year from two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So a significant impact on the town, and also a lot of high-quality jobs and people coming into the community. So I think these are the, our goal was to say, we, in two budding towns, we did quality projects with significant tax revenue, and in both cases, worked closely with the community to, to find a, a, a good path to deliver these products.
We spent a lot of time trying to understand the topography, the issues that the land presented, and the, the benefits, the intangibles. Proximity to the rail station midway between Westboro, I mean, uh, Worcester and Boston. So you could bring talent out, uh, from both locations. And, uh, high-paying jobs in terms of technology. And established a foothold in this area that has become, uh, recognized. I was at a meeting the other day with the Lieutenant Governor, who, uh, unbeknownst, without any prompting, cited, uh, this location as an example of Massachusetts can lead in technology. But what we, what we did before we went forward is we, we tried to understand what the issues are in the community and what, what the desired approach would be, so. Next slide.
Excellent. Thank you. And I, I think one of the things that was very helpful is the amount of time and effort that the community put into, uh, the master plan done in two thousand twenty-one. So it's one of the first things we did is a whole team read through that plan to understand the vision that the community has for its future. So that, that was very helpful, guys.
So if we could, uh, maybe, next slide? This is, there, all right. But there's this cover page for the master plan. I'll probably have to read it from here because I can't see that far, but, um, in year two, twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one, depending on how you categorize it, master plan, there was a section that said, the Route Nine Corridor. Route Nine is an integral part of the community, making Southborough accessible to, to major thoroughfares with, with, which connect residents and businesses to other parts of Massachusetts and beyond. The high-traffic area is the preferred focus of industry and commerce because of its easy transportation access and because it is relatively separated from residential areas of Southborough. And that, that last sentence, I think, is important. And then, if, next slide. We looked at some of the goals that were articulated in the master plan. Develop an economically strong, diverse, and self-sustaining business community, i.e. an economic engine along the Route Nine Corridor. Recommendations: Increase use intensity for currently underused, underutilized property parcels. Increase commercial tax revenue by reducing office space vacancies and encouraging development on targeted, high-potential sites such as Dell Technologies. And finally, explore the opportunity in collaboration with the Planning Board to revise zoning regulations for Route Nine to allow for mixed-use development and taller buildings with the aim of reducing vacancy rates and providing expanded amenities to offices, offices, offices and residents. Now, certainly since two thousand twenty-one, uh, things have changed in the world on a number of fronts, but I think the, the underlying policy objective remains the same. So we took that, and we said, okay, can we develop a targeted approach to zoning on this corridor, on a Dell site, that addresses a number of needs that have been articulated and desirable for the community while at the same time preserving, uh, the control of the relative boards so that they're the masters of their own destiny? So, we spent the better part of a couple of months just kicking ideas around, and we came up with a zoning template that essentially creates a, an additional use by special permit in your industrial, uh, park use, uh, zoning category where the Dell properties, uh, are located. But in the definition of that use, major highway retail, we articulated a number of controls. Location of the property, no, and no impact on residential communities. The size, the mix of the product type that will be, uh, able to be sold in, uh, in, in these types of facilities so that we're responding to a perceived need in the community. So, we, we tried to target it. It's not limited to solely the site, but it, it, it is, would be difficult to, uh, put together other sites that meet these criteria. And, and that's intentional because you want to, with a potential size and use here, you want to make it difficult and ser-, you want serious, uh, thought going into the implementation of a project. So, we look forward to working with the town, who, particularly the Planning Board, because statutorily, they have to make a recommendation to town meeting. But we think it is a well-thought-out and, uh, a plan that will, once implemented, will become our third addition to the next town that we go to and say, look what we did in Southborough. So would like, any questions you have?
I don't really have any questions because I think what we'd like to do is, after some, uh, back and forth, just to take a vote to revert, to refer to the Planning Board to begin the public hearing process. But, um, I like what you said about, well, just two points. One, um, we have an acute need to start to improve our commercial tax base in Southborough. And this needs that need, that's one of the perceived needs. And there's also, you know, I've now lived in the town for thirteen years, and, uh, just, you always have to drive a considerable distance just to buy groceries, and there's not really a great, it's not a great thing. If you can make that more convenient, that saves some valuable time repeated over and over and over again.
It's also environmentally correct to do that, to, instead of driving around.
So, uh, why don't we just go down? Marguerite, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I don't, thank you very much. So I just want to thank you guys for coming tonight and tell you how welcome it is to have this type of presentation and how, as you know, sorely we need this in this town. We've got a, pretty much, um, total residential tax base at this point. It keeps going the wrong way and placing a very big burden on our houses. We had our presentation last night by our Affordable House Trust, where they have, um, presented a new housing production plan. And, and it was a slide that says that thirty percent of people in this town, um, don't have enough income to afford to stay in their houses, to pay the, the housing cost. I mean, thirty percent in a town. Southport's supposed to, is sort of known as being wealthy, and it's really not. And so this is such welcome news. I think the projects you've done in Westboro and Marlboro are so impressive. I am, I hope that this board will totally support anything that we have a role in, um, and, um, anything you need, just let us know.
And we encourage you to check out, uh, we, we picked local projects so that you have the opportunity to reach out to those communities, and you could verify what we've said. Uh, there have been other major projects that they have done that have a similar result, so.
So thank you.
The opportunity for the, the tax increase is very interesting and appealing. So right now, I have no questions, though, about the presentation.
Welcome to Southborough.
I've been here before.
Yeah, okay. It, it's no secret, we've talked about, you know, the, the shifting of the residential tax burden. It's particularly hitting our senior community hard. I've gotten an earful on a few ca-, occasions. And, um, the only way that we can shift our tax burden, we had historically been at about eighty-twenty commercial, residential commercial, and we've been headed in the wrong direction for the last seven or eight years. And the only way we can do that is, is by, um, welcoming new businesses into town, and this is certainly a, a substantial, uh, opportunity. I don't think you've asked for enough, but, uh, we'll, we'll deal with that later, so, uh, I'm in favor.
Thank you. I, I think one of the challenges, and we hear this from a lot of communities, is if you took an office building five years ago and the value at, and the value today, it's gone down. The homes have gone up. So, some of these communities were in that eighty-twenty, seventy-five, twenty-five, and they're all fighting the same thing. The only way to offset that is bring in quality commercial development, and it's going to be developments needed today. That's not, the, the office thing is just shifting. Some of the office vacancy rates are crazy, and then the rates, unfortunately, just keep going lower. And the work from home, there's so many things that, that have occurred, we, we, we don't see that changing anytime in the near future, unfortunately.
Yeah, and the, and the trick right now, and I think what this team brings to the table is difficult times require you to, to adopt a different approach. So we're not afraid to look at things differently and come up with some ideas that are not the, you know, the usual ideas that you would see because that you need solutions that are reactive and proactive, um, to very dynamic conditions in the economy right now. And you have a very unique opportunity where you have a blank camp, canvas along Route Nine there. And early on, and we've tried to understand what the objectives are, and as I said, it's our object, our responsibility as we go through this process with the Planning Board and other concerned, uh, residents to provide the answers and to provide the vision that we think can be effectuated.
And just to make clear, one of the things you're asking us to do is to put it on the warrant for the town meeting.
It's a town meeting, both.
We had originally targeted May, uh, November third for the special town meeting, but I think we're, it's on our agenda to consider moving it up to October.
Either, either date's fine with us.
Okay. So, um, is there anything you'd like to add before we turn it over to the Planning Board?
My, my only comment on the Planning Board, if I could ask the Planning Board, because we're going to be before them in a public hearing, that we keep the discussion at a high level now so that we don't run the risk of having a warrant automatically analyzed before it's been published and whatever.
Fair enough. Mimi?
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for mentioning the master plan. Three of us on the Planning Board had a hand in that, and it was totally written by volunteers with a very small grant, so that was.
Very well done.
Thank you. Ms. Houlihan, do you have any questions?
No, I'll reserve mine for a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any high-level questions, Ms. DeMire? Yeah, so thank you. We look forward to seeing you before the planning board, and we'll ask all the nerdy zoning questions then. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I'd like to move that the select board refer Atlantic Management's proposed zoning bylaw to the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Enjoy the rest of the summer.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for making the trip in, the whole gang.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the interview and appointment of Keith Ackley for the Tricentennial. Mimi?
That would be me. Can you do that?
Yeah, please come up.
All right. Here?
Yeah.
All right.
Maybe a little more time before we... Oh, Mimi, do you need to adjourn your meeting?
Bye, Christine. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, Marnie. She's already adjourned. Is she already gone? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Latrell, yes?
Rashia, yes. DeMiri, yes? That's good enough. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Well, hi, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Keith Ackley, Two Reservoir Drive. Although I'm originally from Northborough, I've been a Southborough resident for the last 32 years. And I know a number of people that are on the Tricentennial Committee. They, a couple of them approached me about helping out with putting on some kind of a music festival, which I offered my assistance and then got recruited to say, would you be kind enough to maybe lead it? Because they needed some additional help. So of course I said yes. And I guess the process would be to go get appointed to the committee by the select board. And then I think tomorrow night is a meeting of the Tricentennial Committee where I'm pretty sure I'll pass.
Well, I'm the select board representative to the Tricentennial Committee. And we'd love to have you on board. Al, you have any questions?
No, thank you for volunteering.
All right.
I have no questions. Thanks.
All right.
So...
Yes.
So what's the music background that is so interesting here?
You know, so in terms of music background, I do not have a strong music background.
But that's the part you want to, that's the part that interests you as far as what they want?
I'm interested, that's what they needed as well. But I have been, organizational skills, I think, are probably something that I'm stronger at than necessarily music. I've run a number of events. I used to run for a number of years, Southborough Little League, putting on opening day, which I don't even know if it's a big thing these days, but we had one of the second biggest thing in town when we were doing it. And so I think my background is in finance and operations. I do like getting involved in events. And my thoughts were to perhaps approach a number of bands and musical groups that have a connection to the town. Find a venue that would accommodate a kind of a community event with, you know, everybody in the family could come and enjoy a day out. May have to talk to the recreation department to get some of their experience on putting on summer nights. But I have not had a chance to talk to the Tricentennial Committee to see what thoughts have been going around with them in terms of what they'd like to see. But once again, my background, Kathy, is not really like as a music promoter or organizer, but I do have some connections to a number of performers.
Well, what I was most interested in, though, this is such a name from the past, Parametric Technology. I hadn't thought about them in a long time. So that was a name from the past as far as something that...
Oh, you're Parametric?
No, I was an accountant at Ernst &amp; Young, so they were a client. So I just hadn't thought about them at all. Very good client, very, very good operation.
Most of my background's been in technology for quite a few years, so...
Well, it's a good committee, so I think you'll enjoy. Everybody that's on it, Andrew's on it, so he, so, and I think they're doing, I think they're doing a lot. I'm part of the fundraising piece of it. So we've got a 501(c)(3) that's been formed to basically hold the money, help raise the money, and then give out grants when you guys have places to spend the money. So that's my connection. So two of us are connected to it directly.
Terrific, terrific. And I'm very familiar with a few of the other members. So once again, they approached me and I said, happy to help.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything I can answer for you?
This is the resume of a person who makes things happen, so...
Well, thank you. I think that may be why they approached me because...
Okay. I move that we appoint Keith Ackley to the Tricentennial Committee for a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, well, thank you for stepping forward. And are you available tomorrow?
Yes, I am planning on attending the meeting tomorrow, which I think is over the Public Safety Building.
So Andrew, remind him to get appointed, or sworn in tomorrow, right?
He gets sworn in. Oh, okay. I'll see if...
You need about three minutes.
Yeah, well, I know, I was sworn in, I'm on the Board of Registervs as well, and I know the process.
What time is your meeting tomorrow?
6:30, right?
So you'll have to come before then.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. I look forward to working on the committee.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is interdepartmental and/or reserve fund transfers. We had originally, we had scheduled this as a joint meeting with the advisory committee. And then once the information was circulated about what the level of interdepartmental transfers were, they're so small that I spoke with Andrew Pfaff, the advisory committee chair, and there's no need to have a joint meeting for about this. So, but Kathy, do you want to speak to the significance of the...
I do.
Yeah.
I do. Again, another compliment to our accounting department. Carla in. So Carla's here. So Carla, can you hear me? I hope so, because I'm trying to give you rave reviews here. But $60 million budget, and this is $2,000, and this is not even over, but this is moving around a little bit between departments. That's all we're doing, not a penny reserve fund transfer, so that's going to be returned to free cash. So, I mean, this is truly worthy of note that they've come through with this. I mean, again, she watches, Carla watches things so closely, so does Brian. So this is just a result of the excellent people we have in that department.
So the only departments that were over were moderator, $20, Aspen Assessment, $191 in recreation, $2,055. So that's pretty impressive to be, have things stay within each department at that level. Yes?
I think it's a good point, easy to do, understand. I think this is one of those things that we could authorize the town administrator to take care of up to some reasonable limit so that it didn't, you know, we need to look at things we can offload this board and put onto, you know, a capable team. So I, you know...
I agree.
It's a subject for another meeting, but I think, you know, these are examples of things that we should offload from our agenda.
Reserve funds a little bit different.
Oh, that, we have nothing to do with reserve.
Nothing but an interdepartment. I totally agree with you as far as having some de minimis to look at here. I mean, this is nothing.
Yeah. Good job.
Okay. Carla?
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for the kudos. I want to give credit where credit is due as well with the department heads. They do a terrific job as well. And I think they should be commended too for having a really great year. This is not where we intended on landing, but it's a great story. And talking about how kind of offloading this mundane detail, it feels like, actually this is another Mass General Law requirement. We need both the advisory and the BOS to vote on these transfers. And they have to happen at the end of the year before the 15th. So we're hitting the mark, and that's wonderful. So thank you again.
All right. So I move that the board approve the interdepartmental budget transfers as reflected in our packet.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The chair's report, we already took care of at the beginning of the meeting. So Marguerite, I think that first member's report is yours.
All right. My member's report is a building department discussion. I think we mentioned last meeting and possibly the meeting before that the building department is in transition right now. We've had two commissioners. We have Kelly O'Brien here today, who is the admin from heaven. And I think I've been talking to people, and Vanessa also had mentioned that you and Mark were in conversation with towns around here to see if there were gaps in what... Because the bottom line is that in the state of Massachusetts, there's so many towns and there's about 40 less building commissioners. So this is either you're going to poach somebody or patch it together, or there needs to be a serious look taken at what the building department can do.
You're saying there's 40 vacancies right now? Is that what we're seeing? It wouldn't surprise me, maybe more.
130, yeah.
I don't know the current amount right now, but there has been quite a bit of turnover in that.
If it isn't 40, it's 30. But either way, it's a lot. And I think Jean Novak mentioned that, why would somebody be a building commissioner when they could use the same skill set to make a lot of money?
Building.
Building. I mean, why would you want to do that? So I guess, so part of the things is needing to look at the salaries, needing to talk some more with the people who are in the building department now, needing to talk to other towns in the region to see if there's any gaps they have we can fill or gaps we have that they can fill. So it's still ongoing discussion. And I was very grateful to Kelly for having an hour of conversation with me a couple of days ago where I got to understand the workflow. And there are, Jean also had a suggestion for a piece of software that might help with the workflow too. And Laura's on the same page with that. But anyway, so if anyone has questions about the building department, it's, now's the time to ask them. So you've got my email. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. And then Al, I think you have the next two members' reports.
Yes, I have two. I met with Melanie, Jim, and Mark, and the subject was trying to create a public meeting scheduling app to see if we could automate a process in town. When we started digging down into it, it looked like there were some building blocks that would need to be done first, the first of which is a meeting room app. Today, we don't have a single place where you can go to schedule meeting rooms. There are some that are available through Outlook and then others that have to be accessed by a phone call or some other process. And so we're starting to look at having a single place where you can go to schedule a meeting room. That's common in, every company of any size that I've ever worked at has one meeting room app. And I think we ought to do that. And the second one is an app to essentially help people fill out agendas. It turns out that the clerk's office spends a fair amount of time going back and forth with agendas that come in which don't meet the letter of the law or there are, have some form of a defect. And having a simple app that you could simply click buttons and pull down menus and you could automatically get a compliant agenda, which is, I guess, becoming increasingly difficult to comply with thanks to the state. And so that's the second building block. And so we're continuing to poke away at that and, you know, begin the process of gathering requirements. The second item I have is, as you know, the wastewater committee has been looking at potential sites for effluent, treated effluent discharge. And, you know, one of the sites that we considered, at least took a look at and had discussions with the Conservation Commission, was the golf course and using treated effluent both for irrigation and potentially a disposal system that wouldn't impact the surface. SVT Sudbury Valley Trustees holds the conservation restriction on that. And we got a response from them that was, I would describe it as not enthusiastic. It's in the packet. So disappointing. I think this is a cautionary tale about writing these sorts of instruments with such draconian prohibitions. We ought to, in the future, if we do something like this, maintain the greatest amount of flexibility possible. As a personal aside, I think it's arrogant to try, for one generation, to try and impose its views on another, but that's a different soapbox for me to stand on. So this is my two reports.
Okay. And I'll just one, add one quickly, that Al and I are meeting with Jay Tallerman tomorrow morning to get town council's perspective on the streamlining, you know, article that we had talked about. And, you know, consent agenda item C, the reauthorizing the board and committee members who we approved and then didn't get swear-in within the, that's another thing we should probably talk to him about. I mean, do we really need to have a certain level of board and committee, like for the Tricentennial Committee, do I really need to go to the town clerk and in person be sworn, I mean, sworn in? If there's, if that's a requirement that can be relaxed?
Yeah, I spoke with the town clerk on exactly the same subject because of the silliness.
All right.
And he's also looking at this.
So we can talk with Jay about that tomorrow, too. Okay.
Can I just add, back to Marguerite's report on, and what I guess Jean Kelly talked about the software that Jean is recommending, that should be in your court as far as looking at that, if that's something that really can make the process down there more efficient. That's what Andrew and Al are trying to do, Kelly, this year, is find ways to streamline our already very efficient town government.
Okay. Vanessa, you have anything under town administrator's report?
Just a couple of quick announcements. Just wanted to welcome Laura West, who is our new program manager in the Council on Aging. She started yesterday. We're very happy she came back today, and she's off to a running start. Also want to welcome back Melissa Danza, who's been out on maternity leave with the birth of her first son. So now she's back to work too, which we're really excited about. And also let the board know that the town moderator last week appointed Brian Shade to the personnel board, so we now have a five-member personnel board again.
Interesting.
Yes.
Okay. So on the consent agenda, I'm going to hold the June 17, 2025 open session meeting minutes. Are there any other holds?
July 1st, too.
Anyone have any holds on B, C, or D? Okay. Seeing none, I move that the board approve consent agenda items B, C, and D.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. On the 17th, got a quick edit. On line 46, and this is on the discussion about 66 Oak Hill Road, about something I said, I suggest that the petitioners could seek acceptance of the access road as a public way, not as a town road. That's the only edit I have to that. You did? Okay.
If you go down to line 50, it's town council, SEL.
Okay. Spelling mistake?
Yes, okay. And that's it. Okay, so the only other one I have besides that one is, I got two. Okay, so line 54, Heritage Day instead of Days, which could be Days, it'd be fun. 172, Mr. Dinton, it was Mr. Dinton and Ms. Landry did August 12th. One seventy-two, Mr. Dington, it was, Mr. Dington and Ms. Landry did August twelfth.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, did July eighth. Yeah, July eighth, Ms. Dington and Marguerite Landry. And that's it for me.
Any other edits to the minutes? I move that the board approve the open session meeting minutes for June seventeen and July first as amended?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. We're moving pretty quickly through this.
Oh, wait, are you doing July first?
I thought we just.
Sorry, I wouldn't listen, Andrew.
Okay.
I just, it's, this.
All right. So.
Now, this really is ridiculous, the one I'm going to do. Okay, so, line, well, Marguerite, and line eighteen, you appreciate it, B four is one word. Okay, I'm done. Sorry, Andrew.
Slide.
Sorry, Andrew.
Okay. I move that we make that amendment to the July first meeting minutes?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Under other matters, we had identified November third, six thirty PM as our fall town meeting date. Then, we found out there was a conflict that we didn't know about. So, I had, well, we've talked to the town council, town clerk, and town moderator. They're all available for the twenty-seventh. We considered moving it up or moving it back. Also, reached out to the planning board about what their preference is, because they also have several zoning articles that they anticipate are going to be on the fall town meeting warrant. So, I'd like to have the board consider moving up the fall town meeting date to Monday, October twenty-seventh, the same time, six thirty?
It's six days, right? It's a six-day difference from what we had.
I think it's, it's a week.
It's a week. There's thirty-one days in October.
Any discussion? Okay. I move that we move up the fall special town meeting to Monday, October twenty-seven at six thirty PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
And this is an example of what Al was talking about, where, again, the right didn't know what the left was doing, so the room, the charter got double booked, because you had different people keeping track of it. So, there you go, Al. Get this taken care of, so that it's all in place.
Yep. Okay. Al, maybe I'll hand it over to you for the NEARIE survey?
We have a NEARIE survey that's basically ready to go. A copy is in the packet. The one issue we have is, I've had several people reach out to me and want to make sure that we have a plan to address access, particularly to our senior community that may not have access to a computer. I've met with Hassan, and we can put a computer that would permit access in the senior center, and he's, they're willing to do that. I met with Peg at the senior center, and she can generate a list, a mailing list, since we can't try to reach these folks via the internet, she can generate a mailing list of six hundred or so seniors that we could send a postcard out to inform them how they can participate if they don't have access to electronics in their home. And so, it would require a postcard of some sort that we would send out. My guess is that the cost of this would be less than fifteen hundred dollars. I would propose that we fund that with some of the funds that are left from the NEARIE appropriations, since this, I think, is reasonably coincident, and.
I don't think Carla's going to agree with you, because we've had some other things that could have been used in money, but if you look at the wording in that Warren article, I don't think it's going to work. But I don't think it's fifteen hundred dollars either.
I was being, yeah, it's probably less, but I, oh, I think.
You can ask her, but I think she's going to say it does.
Okay, well, we would need some sum of money that's on that order to do this. I think this is important. There is a concept and survey research called non-response bias. I think there is anecdotal evidence that a significant portion of the senior community has strong opinions on the subject, and if there, we don't reach out to include them, we, we risk introducing that type of bias. And so, I'm happy to work with the town administrator to find a pocket that we can generate that sum of money.
Can you get the postcard done quickly?
Yeah, I would like to get this done quickly. I'd like to get the survey out, you know, before the end of the month, if not sooner. I think this is something we can do pretty quickly. The survey'd probably be active for something on the order of three weeks. So, you know, it does not, you know, the day we mail it out, we could open the survey or something like that, yeah.
Well, I think, so the content of the survey, are we, I've read the questions. I think they're all pretty straightforward, and are we all okay as a board with the?
As long as, I just want the assurance that Al, Matt, and Laura agreed on what we've got in front of us.
We have never actually met in total, but I believe the answer is yes.
Okay. I just want to get it out.
I didn't.
SCP. It has K through eight. It should just say pre-K through eight for a bunch of this. It's my one, I think, only really big comment.
And Al, I think that the evidence that the seniors were very interested in school project is not anecdotal, it's a fact. Couple times I went to senior senior to talk about the project, and I know there was a couple people that were, I don't know, irritated, that some of the upcoming presentations by the committee or the finance subcommittee were going to be by Zoom, and I know a person said a couple times, not everybody does Zoom. So, I said, I understand. So, we'll try to see what, so we had some in-person ones, we're going to do them in-person, then we're going to do them Zoom. But I do think this is the right thing to do, to make sure that everybody that wants to has a chance to respond.
Well, we can take it up afterwards, but I want to, like, try to just get this out, at least the electronic aspect of the survey, or, because I think that's where the majority of the responses are going to come, to have that, get that out as soon as possible, because, you know, time is ticking. Like, you look at our, our next meeting's not until August nineteenth, and then our, the meeting after that is, we only have one meeting in August, so.
Yeah. Well, given that the board has approved the content of the survey, I'll work with Matt and company to move this along as expeditiously as possible.
Okay.
Are there, can I ask a quick question? Are there going to be hard copies of these available at the senior center, at the library, at the townhouse?
That's not what he's saying so far.
Well, the response is going, is planned to be electronic.
Totally electronic, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And that's why, but making the, the device available at the senior center, you know, would give, give people who don't have access to technology in their home at least a place where they could go and respond.
We've got someone sitting here that is well attuned to what people at senior center need. So, Marion, is this going to work? Do we need to give them hard copies also, that we could input?
Well, I think.
I.
Sorry. I think a couple things. One, that you're going to make the laptop available. The second thing is, is could there somehow be someone there to help them along with it? Because sometimes it's not just the access to the internet, but, you know, how you go about getting, getting everything up and answering the questions. And we do have our program manager on now, so she may be able to fill in. We also have a volunteer coordinator, so maybe they can fill in, and a few others that, you know, we can be there and help them through that, too.
So, if Hassan actually trained both of them and just, I mean, I don't think they're going to need much training, that should suffice as far as making sure someone's there to answer questions if someone runs into an issue?
Sure. I think it's just maybe pulling up the survey and making sure they know how to click through it. You know, sometimes it's as simple as that, that we can do, but, you know, so I think that will work.
Okay.
And I want to thank Al for considering that.
Thank you. Tim?
Tim Letwood wrote, I think, you know, trying to get a mailing list through the council on aging is a reasonable thing to do, but if you want to reach everyone, get the list from the town clerk. That has every person their address, and you can compute the age in two clicks.
I have two comments. Al, question twenty-seven and twenty-eight as options, is that, I don't want to get super nitty-gritty, because I'm sure you put a lot of thought into this, but is there a way to, like, select, you split it into two parts, so you can select A through whatever, so it relates, and then have the response after that?
Me, too.
Just for easier answering and ensuring you get a question or a number to relate
to?
The, the library has done a lot of surveys, and they've tried hard copies and electronic and a lot of different ways to do it, and the, the number of surveys that come back is very small. We did surveys for building, what do you want for building, what do you want for this, what do you want the library to be providing to you? And the, the number that come back is, is under two hundred.
My, my, one other question would be, Al, have you thought about including the potential cost of projects in this for support? I know we discussed that at one point. I don't know how you felt after thinking about it longer.
I don't know that we have numbers that are universally accepted.
I don't know if it's worth asking or not. It's one of those things, like, I don't know if we wanted to bring a potential.
Well, certainly, there are questions in, in the survey about whether cost was an objective, an objection.
So, I think, you know, there's a danger of too much words.
Yeah.
Too many authors.
Yeah. My, my position was that the survey was too long as it is.
Well, as we know, you answer a survey that's short, right? And when you see it's long, you just won't do it. So, I agree, let's not muck it up anymore. I don't think, I don't think you can do the cost pieces, it's too, it's too complicated. So, there's enough cost in here as far as, as cost you're concerned. I think that's probably the generic thing we're looking for versus, would you want to spend seventy, sixty, fifty, forty, thirty, twenty, ten? So, I'm happy with what you've got in here as far as cost goes.
So, just for some clarity, I think it makes sense for us to take a vote, so.
I agree.
I move that the board approve the NEARIE survey that's in our packet.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Tim, did you vote?
I mean, no, I was going to, my only comment was, the thing that I asked out or write down, was looking at question twenty-seven and twenty-eight a little bit. So, it's not that I'm against it, it's just, like, in the pack, the spirit of what's in the packet, I agree with. I just would like to maybe one last read-through. I'd like to give Al the opportunity for one last wordsmithing, if he decides to change it, versus saying what's in the packet.
Yeah, if there's some minor wordsmithing that's done to that, I don't care.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll take Scribner's limit, license.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
What is it you want to do, Tim, to twenty-seven?
If you read twenty-seven and twenty-eight, they just have two answers and one question. And it's, like, if you have any that you don't support, there's not an easy way to say A, G, A, B, C, D, E, G, whatever. There's no way to say that, and then put your comments for why after. I just want to make sure that it's easy for people to answer, where they put in a letter or whatever the number would be, the letter would be, and then comments along with it. Just really a Scribner's thing, more than anything.
You want the box to be bigger, as we're saying?
It might be two parts.
Okay. So, you want them, you know, it's not like you want them to say A, B, and C, you still want one answer.
I'm not saying how it should be exactly implemented. I see it as, do you have one of these options? You don't like A, B, C, D, E, F, as a multiple choice, and then why? It's just, you know, two parts. But if we can just say with Scribner's opportunity, I'm all for that.
Okay. So, I think we took our.
I think I know what you want, Al.
We're all, we're all.
But just be clear, there's two other people that have done this, so I don't think we should make changes without them, at least understanding what we've done. So, I would be very cautious about making any changes at this point, given we think we've got three people who we authorized to do this, that have come forth with this. So, if we want to propose a change, I think it should be made public, and the other two get to weigh in on it, but I still want to get this thing out the door, too.
We just kind of get this.
I agree.
Okay. So, we've taken the vote.
Okay.
Okay.
And we've also told, we've also authorized Al to sit down, figure out how to fund it, postcard, and get the postcard written out the door, too.
Yep, and I was just having a sidebar with Vanessa, and she said.
Within binding.
Yeah, within the select board postage budget, if you can't get it from the.
I thought that budget was overdrawn already.
Over in the new year.
Yeah, it's July, it's July fifteenth. Hopefully, it's not overdrawn.
Okay.
Okay, the last.
Thank you for doing this, by the way. It's a huge amount of work.
Yep.
All right. The last item on the agenda is to.
I wish I could take credit, but I don't get most of it. Lynn and Matt get most of the credit for this.
They've, they've done an outstanding job.
Yep.
Okay, so, last item on the agenda is to appoint the advisory committee representative to the pre-K eight school building committee, and I, because they were meeting about this tonight, so I just, Andrew Pfaff texted me that they voted to appoint Eric Glazer as the advisory committee representative. So, is there any, I move that we appoint Mr. Glazer as the advisory committee representative?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. So.
This could be a record.
This is the, been the fastest select board meeting in probably a year and a half. So, with that, our next meeting's not until August nineteenth?
This was an important meeting.
It was an important meeting. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?